Mr. Rebl. We're good to start?
The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January 6th, 2021. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier News, the Echo Sentinel, and Tappin tomorrow, and filed with township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to republic where we stand, one nation under God, individual for the liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bellish.
I think.
Mr. Vichy.
Here.
Mr. Brazil. Mrs. Clark.
Present.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Here.
Ms. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here.
Mrs. Zahn.
Here.
And Mr. Frank.
Here.
We may proceed.
To the Board of Ed retreats.
Great, thank you. And so for those of you who are on the Zoom call, you may not know that Matt Giacobi, the school district's attorney is in the room, and he'll be leading us through ethics training in just a few minutes. The board will then go, we'll have a little bit of a conversation in here, and then we'll go into executive session with legal counsel separately. When that happens, the meeting on Zoom will go dark. There'll be a message on the screen while that's taking place before the board reconvenes in public session to discuss goal setting for next year. So I shared with the board ahead of the meeting, you have a document through the memo called Board Retreat Agenda. The four o'clock item is themes from the board self-evaluation. I'll just summarize a couple of takeaways. I know you've all had a chance to look through things, but the 100% of the board members participated in the board self-evaluation this year, which is really great. The key takeaways, first of all, kind of anecdotal for me would be we operate at a very high level at the Warrenton to Board of Education Board table. And one of the ways you can see that is by looking over the course of several years, the areas that have been highlighted as opportunities for growth. And then you can see that we've taken action and made improvements in those areas year after year. We are constantly working to improve. As far as the key takeaways from the boards of self-evaluation, board and staff relations were rated as the highest area by the board members. Community relations had the highest year-over-year increase from 2020 to 2021. In board operations, meetings saw the greatest single year-over-year drop in rating and went from the board's highest self-rated area to the lowest self-rated area in that year. And then although it increased from last year to this year, student achievement and performance monitoring continued to be the lowest self-rated area for the fifth year in a row. So that those were the quick from the top sort of takeaways. And I also shared with the board some thoughts administratively about how this plays into planning for next year. Mr. Giacobi will go through the code of ethics as part of the ethics training. There's a link to it in the in the agenda. My recommendation to the board is that we use the opportunity to reestablish our board norms, which we adopted all the way back in 2016 and then have kind of looked at from time to time, but haven't done a deep dive. So that was a suggestion based on the board self-reflection. And then we talk about how, you know, where we can make improvements about how we operate, especially as we're coming out of what was a distance focus. It's I think it's going to start to feel much easier as we get back to what we consider to be normal board meetings. You know, I reflect on the fact that there are people at the table literally today who this is their first time seeing everybody else in person. And even now, it's a little bit stilted because we're also on microphones and seeing ourselves on TV and everything else. It's a little bit different than we're used to, but I think that that'll all get more normal as time goes on. So that's kind of the quick overview from me. But before I talk about how I thought this might tie into some goal setting, I don't know if other people had different takeaways they wanted to share about the self-reflection, self-evaluation. Mr. Weinstein, if you want to jump in, you just talk and we'll know that you're talking.
Yeah, I'm here. Nothing for me, though. Thank you.
Okay, so the the goals, as I mentioned, a goal around reestablishing the the board norms for communication and adding operations. And I wanted to mention a couple of specific examples there. I think that the discussion that's been ongoing for a long time around regionalization is a good example of how we need to bring the sort of out there amorphous topics into a really clear decision-making process. This isn't a topic that can continue later on because there is some attorney client privilege for executive session on the topic. But in general, we need to make a decision as a board about is this something we're doing or not? Because there's a lot of administrative responsibilities tied up in what comes next. And so I thought, you know, coming up with the schedule of when do things fall into a new business versus discussion would be a good thing for us to look at over the next meeting or so. The August meeting probably would be the place to tie that together. That's it for me on the the self-reflection. As always, I think it's a really high level process that you go through. Not every board takes the time it does to go through that process. If you're okay, we can turn it over to Mr. Giacobi.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. Matt Giacobi, I'm here to do the annual ethics training. I've given you an outline that contains the School Ethics Act, each of the provisions, and then cases that arise out of those various provisions and advisory opinions. I'm not going to go through this in detail. This is something that you can use for your own edification and reference. And we've updated, this has got the most recent cases that touch on the different ethics issues. Right, what the way I start this is that the individual board members, and it's a little different. A lot of people think that when they get elected to a board, it's like the equivalent of being elected to town council, and it's not. It's a very different public office. And the reason it's a different public office is that the laws that the legislature has passed over the years contain an 18A are very different from those contained in 48, which governs municipalities. And the reason that they're different is that most board members have children in the school district. So what they've done is they've set up the laws so that you make sure that the schools are well-run, but you don't run the day-to-day operations. You hire somebody to run the day-to-day operations. You hire somebody to be the captain of the ship, and in this instance, it's Dr. Mingle. And so board members, unlike, you know, the mayor of a town, don't get involved in day-to-day decisions. They don't figure out who they're going to hire. They don't discipline employees. They don't make inquiries about a specific student matter. What you do is you refer it to Dr. Mingle. And Dr. Mingle, who's the captain of your ship, is the person who's charged with doing that. And ultimately, if it's not being done, you as a board hold Dr. Mingle responsible for the inaction or failure to take action on certain items. Boards, however, have incredible power because when you look at the tax levy of your township, the single biggest component of the property tax is this Board of Ed and the Regional Board of Ed. So Board of Eds have huge amounts of power in terms of setting the levy. And the one thing that the legislature has done is they want boards to create policies. So what are policies? They're basically your laws. You're taking laws that were codified by the legislature. You're putting them into policy, and you're telling Dr. Mingle, you and all the your subordinates have to follow the board policies. And as you know, there's myriad policies, policies on HIV, there's policies on curriculum, there's policies on affirmative action, there's policies on domiciling of students, how to deal with, you know, children are ill, and you pass policies dealing with COVID, etc. You formulate the policy, and that's why you have committees to formulate policy. The board vets the policies, you enact the policies, and Dr. Mingle will have to follow them. And then all the staff below Dr. Mingle has to follow those policies. So you are a policymaking board that sets the policy, sets the tone, sets the goals, and then you charge Dr. Mingle as the captain of your ship to follow the policies and fulfill the goals you as a board establish. And I know later this afternoon and this evening, that's what you're going to be doing. And so the person that you hold responsible, if those goals aren't being met, is Dr. Mingle. Boards, unlike municipalities, boards hire one person, Dr. Mingle. Now, can you hire other people? Of course, you vote to hire, but all the other hiring in the district is based on Dr. Mingle's recommendation. So a board member can't say, I want to hire Matt Giacobi to be the BA. If Dr. Mingle doesn't recommend being a BA, you can't vote on it. It's got to be a recommendation of Dr. Mingle. Same is happens if Dr. Mingle decides he wants to non-renew an employee. He has a teacher who's not performing well, he has the right to non-renew them. And the moment that Dr. Mingle issues a letter of nonrenewal, that employee is deemed non-renewed. They can come back to the board and ask for a hearing, ask the board to try to overturn it. But Dr. Mingle has the power to non-renew. Dr. Mingle does not have the power to hire somebody. Dr. Mingle has the power to recommend the hiring of somebody, and it's ultimately the board who says, we agree or disagree with Dr. Mingle, and votes to hire the person. Again, you're there to make sure that the district is well-run, you don't run the day-to-day operations. And what the legislature has done is they've said, Dr. Mingle, who's got the certificate to be the superintendent of schools and has a training, he or whoever is in that seat is the person best suited to judge whether or not somebody is the appropriate candidate for a job. And so that's something you always keep in mind is that you make sure that the district is well-run. Board members, and I'm going to tell you something we can do and I can help you with if issues come up. Board members typically get in trouble when they start acting on their own. Remember, when you're a board member on your own, you don't have power. When you come together as a board, you have lots of power. And so it's always best to vet things, talk about it in committee, come to the board, and have a discussion here at the board before any individual board member takes action. When board members get in trouble, it's when board members write, you know, letters to the mayor or letters to the editor on behalf of the board without vetting it with the board. Now, as a board member, you don't give up your right of first, your first amendment right of free speech. So if there's an issue in the town, they want to, you know, construct a new rec field or something, and you're opposed to it as a taxpayer, you can write and say, I oppose this, or you can show up at a public meeting and say, I oppose this. But it's imperative that you say, I'm not doing this on behalf of the board. I'm doing this as an individual citizen. Where board members get in trouble is they they start taking their board role and start espousing things on behalf of the board without clearing with the board. And so there's ethics decisions where board members have gotten in trouble, where they've written letters on board letterhead without the rest of the board knowing, or they've started interviewing candidates for superintendent without the rest of the board knowing, or they've rice employees without the board and the superintendent knowing. You can't do that. That's when board members get in trouble. And what I tell folks is, there's nothing that you do that is that urgent that you have to make a swift decision. In my 25-plus years of practicing law, I've only had a couple real emergencies, like a fire in the building. It doesn't happen that often. So usually, the best thing to do is you put the brakes on and you talk to Dr. Mingle and say, these, this is what I'm thinking. And you always go through Dr. Mingle. If a parent comes to you with a concern, don't try to resolve the concern. Say, thanks, I'll let the superintendent know, let Dr. Mingle know. It's Dr. Mingle's job then to follow up with the parent. When board members try to make quick decisions or, you know, give an answer to a parent, that's when people, when things go awry. So it's important that you just remember, nothing's that urgent. Talk to Dr. Mingle, and if Dr. Mingle's not sure if it could be an ethics violation, he can reach out to us. The one reason you have a board attorney is, that's one of the reasons, is if an issue comes up, you have a business and you think there might be a conflict. You have a family in burn, it might be a conflict. Ask Dr. Mingle. Dr. Mingle can reach out to us and we can issue you guys an advisory opinion. Most of these cases, and we have accessed all the cases, we can give you a guidance on whether or not you can vote on something or not vote on something, whether you can participate or you cannot participate. The one interesting thing is the School Ethics Commission, which is the body at the Department of Education that oversees board member conduct and issues decisions if board members are unethical, they will issue advisory opinions. Now, this is what's really critical. They will only issue an advisory opinion for conduct that has not yet occurred. You can't vote on something and say, you know what, I should have gotten an advisory opinion. They're not going to give you a go-through from jail card. Not that you go to jail for an ethics violation, but they're not going to, they're not going to, you know, waive your, waive your sentence. If you have an issue, and I can't give you an answer because it's some unique fact pattern, we can write and ask for an advisory opinion from the School Ethics Commission, and within about four weeks, they'll issue a decision as to whether or not you can vote or participate. I'll give you an example. I represent a board, and the board member was an official for the NJSA. She did gymnastics, high school gymnastics competitions, swimming, etc. And she would never, ever, ever do any officiating at the school, the high school where she was a board member. Then she came to me and said, you know what, I'm a little concerned because in two months, there's going to be the state championships and the regionals, and I get asked to be an official because she was a college gymnast. And I'm a little concerned. What if one of the kids from our high school ends up as, you know, in the state finals and I'm officiating without a conflict? Well, I can assure you, there's no ethics decision on that. So we wrote it, wrote for advisory opinion, School Ethics Commission said, not a conflict. You don't have any control over that. You have to, you know, officiate as you would normally officiate, but that would not be a conflict. And so she got that decision and she was able to officiate. And so we've done that quite a bit. I've gotten ethics decisions of whether a board member can be a member of the PTO, participate. There's all different things that we can do for you and get that. The only thing is, and that's why I said, there's nothing that's that urgent. If you think about it, ask Dr. Mingle. If we can give you an answer right away, you're good to go. And if it's a very unique fact pattern, we can ask for advisory opinion. The important thing about asking is, if you ask and you get an opinion that you can do it and you participate, and let's say we're wrong, we won't be wrong, but let's say we were. If somebody files an ethics charge against you, the School Ethics Commission will say, did you get legal advice on it? And if you did, that's a go-through from jail card because they say, wait a second. You took the time to get the advice, you took the guidance of the attorney, and then, you know, maybe attorney got it wrong, but ultimately, they said, that's not your fault. So it's important to just ask if you, if you have any concern, if it's a business that you're in, if it's a family member, if it's a cousin. Where mostly ethics issues come up, frankly, is in the area of collective negotiations. And on the second page of our ethics decision, section of the third page, but if you turn it, there's actually a chart. And what it does is it tells you when, when and when not you can participate in negotiations, voting on contracts, hiring, evaluating superintendents. And it really comes down to whether or not you have a family member who works for the board, because that does happen. You know, you got, you have a spouse who's a teacher here, and then you get elected to the Board of Ed. You're allowed to get elected, but then you have a lot of perclusions of what you can do. And then the other thing, it gets a little trickier, is if you have a family member who's a member of the NJA in another district. And what we do is we will, we will inquire of you, if that's the case, what, what, A, relation are they to you? And B, what is their involvement in the union? If they're the president of the union in another local, that's very different than if they're just a teacher and they're not that involved in the union. So it becomes fact-specific. And that's where most of these issues come up in terms of ethics is dealing with the collective negotiation agreement. As you know, the vast majority of your employees are members of collective negotiation agreements. The other area where where board members go awry or find themselves in trouble is you go into executive session at almost every board. I think you probably do it at every board and, or quite a few of them. And often what you're discussing in executive is personnel, student matters, attorney-client privilege, communications, etc. When board members leap that out, that's when board members get in a lot of trouble. And I'll give you an example of a case where that occurred. When you go into executive session, that's after saying, you've got to protect that because you're protecting the privacy rights of staff members. Very often, they might have medical issues, disciplinary issues, and you're protecting the privacy rights of students, whether it's a disciplinary case, a health issue, an IEP issue. And so you have to go to great lengths to protect that. So whenever you're in executive session, just remember, what stays, happens in that room stays in that room. And the only way to wave is, the only way that a heavy wave is the full board has to waive that privilege. Or the issue is no longer confidential. For example, if you're doing collective negotiations, you enter into the memorandum agreement, the board votes on it. Once it's voted on, that issue, that particular issue is no longer subject to confidentiality because it's voted on. So it's very, very important that when you have discussions in the executive session, it doesn't be that room. The case that I, I was involved with was, they had a, there was a board up in North Jersey, and a staff member appeared at the district highly intoxicated. Actually pulled up in the car, the back of the car was filled with bottles. Person fell out of the car, very, you know, profound alcoholic. Police were called, ambulance, taken to the hospital, and the superintendent wrote to the board, and it was all in front of the school, so kids saw it. He understood that this was going to become, you know, an issue where you could get grabbed in the grocery store, the library, and said, this is highly confidential. And we kind of the whole story was taken care of, and we'll handle it this way. If these, these is confidential, and if there's any inquiries in the press or whatever, we're forming a meeting. There's one board member who didn't really believe in public education, thought it was a really bright idea to take the superintendent's email and post it on NJ.com. This is when everyone's posting NJ.com, and post the whole thing, confidential personnel, employees names. That board member was removed from the board. School Ethics Commission says it's outrageous, you violated it, you're removed. Recently, up in North Jersey, a board member had a blog. And he was blogging and going after staff members. And he was actually the board president at the time, and he was counseled not to do that. And he said, I have a first amendment right. Well, School Ethics Commission said, no, you don't. You're removed from the board because you're revealing confidential information about staff members, personnel, and all that. That's what I see School Ethics Commission remove board members, is if they do it. And bottom line is, you're all volunteers. You're volunteering to make your district better for your kids, for your property values, etc. You don't need to go through the School Ethics Commission and have ethics complaints from a member of the public, or the board itself can vote to file ethics charges against an individual board member. It's not worth it, and it's an expensive undertaking. Now, you as board members, if somebody does file ethics charges against you, the law says you have to be indemnified, and you have insurance. And ultimately, the board's insurance carrier will provide a defense to you. But there's always a deductible. And those deductibles could be $5,000, $10,000, $15,000. So the board actually spends money defending ethics charges. So in order to avoid spending money, district money on ethics charges, instead of being involved in, embroiled in one of these things, just put the brakes on, slow down, and if you have any concerns, ask a question. Pick up the phone, talk to Dr. Mingle, and ask a question. The other area that I wanted to touch on is use of social media and emails. That's where a lot of people get in trouble. People believe that social media, they feel compelled to write on Facebook or Instagram. I personally think it's all evil. So I don't have any of this because I've never seen anybody get good things, because everyone's lying. My life is the greatest thing ever. My kids are like outrageously great. You know, I've got phenomenal wealth. Facebook is just, you know, people are just bragging and not showing you that the rest is something like. When board members start engaging in Facebook and start engaging in dialogue with people, and you don't put in the thing, I'm writing on my own behalf, I'm not writing on behalf of the board, or they get involved in, in, in discussions, sometimes they're very acrimonious discussions, as we've seen over the last, you know, 18 months, two years. Board members get themselves in hot water. Even though it might not be an ethical violation, you could get yourself embroiled in something that it's very hard to extricate yourself from. And remember, you're volunteers. You all have private lives. Many of you work in companies, in corporations, have businesses. You don't need that to adversely affect you. You're here to do good, not get harmed. And so when board members start engaging, the best thing to do is if there's something going on Facebook that needs to be responded to or in social media, let Dr. Mingle know, and Dr. Mingle on behalf of the board can put something together and respond. Because it doesn't do any good to have all different board members responding to stuff. You want to speak with one voice. The other area where people get in a lot of trouble is on email. And on email, right now, as we sit here tonight, you guys have a forum. You have a majority of the full membership of the board here, and you're having a meeting. Well, if a majority of the full membership of the board is having email communications, that constitutes a meeting. The only problem with that is you didn't notice the meeting, the public's not there, and they can't witness it. And how do people find out about these violations of the Public Meeting Act? Oh, by the way, the person who's responsible for violations of the Public Meeting Act, not the School Ethics Commission, it's this person in Somerset County called the prosecutor. That's who oversees violations of public meeting. So how do people find out about it? Well, there's another little law called the Open Public Records Act, Oprah. So somebody will do an Oprah request, they'll ask for all the emails on some hot topic, and then they'll look at the email chain, and you'll start seeing all these board members talking and having a conversation. And then the next thing you know, you know, you're getting inquiries from the prosecutor's office, why did you have this illegal meeting? So it's very important that you make sure that you're not communicating via email to the entire board. Can one board member email to another board member? Yes. What I recommend is, is if there needs to be a communication goes out to the whole board, Dr. Mingle should send it to the board president and blind copy all the other board members. Why? Because if one of the board members hits reply all, it goes back to the board president, Dr. Mingle, then we go to the whole board. And what you have to remember is that everything that you write, unless it's attorney-client privileged or it deals with personnel or a student, but virtually everything that you write is subject to Oprah. And so if you write it, make sure that you're really comfortable saying it because there's a high probability that somebody else will see it. A member of the public, the press, whatever. I can tell you how many times people have written things, and you, and I read it, say, I can't believe they wrote that. You know, they just hit send, whether it's in anger or late at night or whatever. And it's gotten people into very difficult situations. The other thing I will tell you is imperative that you use the district email. Why? Because when an Oprah request comes in, the records custodian, who's your business administrator, can go to district email and do the search and see if there's any responsive documents. They don't have access to your Gmail account or your Yahoo account or AOL account. They don't have access to it, so they can't do that search. And what ends up happening is very often, somebody, if they file an Oprah lawsuit, they might know that you sent something from a Yahoo account or a Gmail account because they, they got wind of it. And they'll do an Oprah request. The records custodian will produce all the records that are in possession of the district. And they'll say, they'll file a lawsuit, they'll say, gotcha, you didn't produce this one. The problem with Oprah is, is that they file a lawsuit. If the lawsuit is the catalyst for generating the turning over of the document, you have to fill their attorney's brief. These become exceedingly expensive. A district, not a district, a town in Middle Plots County, which I won't name, but it's close proximity to you, lost an Oprah case, and the legal fees were over half million dollars. So you got to be super careful what you write. Just think about it. You know, Alexander Graham Bell came up with the straight adventure called the telephone. I recommend using the telephone, you know, that, 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 yeah, people can still pay you on the telephone. I think the telephone is probably a safer mode for you to call Dr. Mingle, ask a question, and then Dr. Mingle can respond to you. And if it's something important, you don't want the rest of the board to. Finally, what I would tell you is that when you're, when you're a school board member, if you don't give up your rights as a parent. So if you are a parent and your kid's in trouble, you have the right to go talk to the principal. You have the right to go to IEP meetings. You have a right to go back to school night, talk to your kids, teachers. But just remember, these are staff members, they know you're elected. So never say something like, I'm a board member. If they bring it up, say, well, I'm a board member, but I'm here tonight as a parent. Just re-emphasize, you're here in your role as a parent, not as a board member. Because I've had staff members say, oh, well, this board member intimidated me. If you're having a problem with one of your children and a teacher, my strongest advice is, don't take management in your own hand, go to Dr. Mingle. Say, this is what's going on, I need you to intervene. And we can intervene so that you don't get in a situation where a staff member is making false accusations against you. That's the training today, and if you have any questions or want any clarification on why to do stuff.
Does anybody have any questions for? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Right, that's what the executive session.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10411, permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation and/or matters of attorney client privilege and specific prospective or current employees, unless all who could be adversely affected, the superintendent's evaluation. Action may be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately thirty minutes. And be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second the motion.
Second. Second. Someone seconded.
Yes.
Mr. Frank. Fall in favor.
Aye.
Any abstention? Opposed? Abstentions? Seconded session.
We'll be going out the door, turn right, and we're going to room one, which is the last door on the left side.
Leave executive session, go back to the public session.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
That was Ms. Keller.
Those members in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions, we're back in briefing session.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weinstein, are you with us? If you're muted, please unmute. See on the participant list.
Yes.
Okay, so we have about forty, forty-five minutes or so before our, our dinner recess. There's two topics, which is board goal setting. And then I'd like to give a little bit of an overview of where the administrative team is as far as our recommendations for strategic plan priorities for this coming year, which would be district goal setting. So as I mentioned at the top, you know, just as a starting point, there's wording here for three board goals. Reestablishing best practices for norms of board communication and operations. And for the board members, if you're in the live agenda, retreat agenda, I put a link to the norms in case you want of them. Which would be followed up with an action plan by administration with president and vice president of the board. And then we would probably address that in August and September and whatever, you know, it took us to do that. The second one recommended there is exactly from two years ago, which was to support a communication strategy for the referendum. So we were very successful two years ago. We should probably replicate the process we used and just tweak where it can be better, but we already have an action plan for that. We would just have to put it into action. And then finally, rather than spell out each and every priority that might be in the strategic plan, I thought it worked well this year to have the strategic plan commitments on the agendas. And then here the board would just be committing to supporting the implementation of whatever we decide are the year two priorities, which would happen over the next meeting or two. So that's it as a starting point for goals. It's not really my decision. I just wanted to give you a starting place for discussion.
So I assume we're going to move right into these recommendations for reestablishing the best practices. We have norms for consideration. We want to discuss that. Go through the list of Matt has included the link up here on the agenda. The retreat agenda. So if there are any, any comments or questions or items that wish to be brought up regarding the norms to board communication. Now would be the time. So these norms will be what presented at the next meeting for approval.
I mean, they're technically already approved because we do that every year, but we could put it on the agenda. So people can prepare to bring suggestions for changes or anything like that if they want to.
Okay, so communication strategy for the referendum. Does, should we go back and talk about how we did the last one? And then maybe discuss if that makes sense to do again.
Do you want to give like a summary?
Yeah.
So two years ago, we established sort of a calendar. We looked, we asked for board volunteers to be with administration at things like back to school nights. The board president at the time and Mrs. Lenhar and I went to township committee meeting. We went to, you know, we basically went to any audience that was willing to have us to talk about the benefits of a referendum, which I should repeat right now is with no impact on the local tax levy again into twenty twenty-one like it was in twenty nineteen. That was the primary communication was to help people understand how that could be true so that, and then let them know what was included. So my suggestion would be that we follow that path again. We have to make decisions still about which of those events in the fall are in person, for example, back to school nights, you know, our parents going to want to come to a huge gathering in school. I don't know. It might have to be virtual or some hybrid. Either way, that's our biggest opportunity to get the word out to parents. So we want to be ready for the first week of school.
Yeah, I guess I remember going, I was not on the board for the last referendum, but I remember going to back to school night at Mount Horvath. I think you were there, Mrs. Lenhar. And you guys had a nice presentation to explain what was, the money was being used for. What the impact was on the tax levy, what our capital reserves were, how the money was being used. And I found it very useful. I think I was just coming into the board this, as that was happening. So I think that's something we should, we should certainly do again. Having the support certainly of the community with children in the school who will benefit most from this money being spent and these improvements being made. I think getting the message out to those people and encouraging them to get out to vote on what will be an off election year would be I think certainly helpful. So I assume that's a, any comments on that? Do you want to have any feedback on recommendations for a plan that administration should? Okay, so I assume you'll bring to the board a, a recommendation of a plan that we'll use for, for that communication. So moving on to the implementation of the year two strategic plan priorities.
Sure. So I'll use this as the chance to, to share what the administrative team recommendations are as far as what we believe the, the priority should be. I'd like to start by sharing kind of how we got to these recommendations because I think that's a really important part of actually your one implementation. Which is a, the board adopted a strategic plan just before the pandemic, which had, has eight commitment areas. Four commitment areas with eight goals underneath them. And one of those things was around a change management process and engaging the community. In year one, which was last year, we created voice and engagement working groups, which include teaching staff members, administrative staff members, board representatives and parents. Representing all five schools, all different kinds of job types that have been meeting around those eight goals and giving feedback about how did year one go? So they get to, they see everything. They see the, the action plans behind the scenes that the administrative team is working on. They give feedback. And then we went out and had a public input session back in mid to late May it was. And we asked for the members of the community to give us feedback about what did we do last year and what should the next set of priorities be? All of that feedback was brought back to the working groups and then each subgroup made recommendations based on the feedback they got from staff, from the community and from their own work to say, these are the things we should be doing in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And these are the things that can wait for longer. That generated the list of somewhere around twenty-five discrete action items for next year, not including returning to full days of school. Doing a regionalization study, our preschool pilot, which we already had put into place. So there are other big topics even beyond that. So what we did over the last couple of weeks here, as we kicked off the twenty-one, twenty-two school year as a leadership team is we've been working through, okay, within this list of high priority items, which ones are the highest high priority items? Which ones need to come first? Which ones can wait for later? And that's where we are today. So in the board, I, there's a document called priority recommendations. There was a spreadsheet. Where I tried, I know it's a lot of information. I tried to make it clear which things we thought were the highest of the high priority. So if it's bolded in that spreadsheet, that means it's already baked into this year. Because we've already started, for example, administer common assessments and support staff in the process of analyzing and using the results to inform goal setting and promote student investment and learning. We started that last year with our I-ready rollout. That's going to continue this year with even more focus. We wouldn't stop doing that right now. So we're, we're not going to stop the things we started in year one. So that's baked in. And there are several other bolded items that we've already committed to for the year because we've adopted resources or you know, there's staffing revolve, the referendum, for example, we've made a five-year commitment to our security through the safety report. Then in italics are the next items the administrative team thinks should come first in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. There's really only one big one that the board needs to weigh in on whether you think this is the right direction for us. These smaller ones like increased radio availability will happen without you ever needing to really know about it. That's just going to happen. But the big one is in our strategic plan, there's an action item which has been reinforced by the parents at the parent information sessions. That we need to explore the advantages and disadvantages of restructuring and or rezoning the elementary schools and the impact on equity and student learning. So we hear about this topic in a lot of different ways. Our staff members go back two and a half years to when we were starting the strategic planning process, talked to us about it's not equitable. If I'm a speech therapist in this school, my caseload is different than a speech therapist in that school because the school sizes are so different. Or it might be a concern about special education access. So for example, there are certain programs because of how complicated or costly they are that are only offered in one building. So if you happen to live in a zone for another building, your child has to go to a different school to get their, their special education services. There are a lot of inefficiencies in how we staff. And then there are opportunities where, for example, if you had a school counselor who was a specialist at a certain level that they might be able to focus more depending on the structures. At a minimum, the way this manifests for parents of elementary school students is that the size of our schools are drastically different. So in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, if you remove preschool, Mount Horvath has somewhere around a hundred and seventy students. While Woodland and ALT have somewhere around two fifty, these aren't the exact numbers. I'm just ballparking and Central has around three hundred. The difference between three hundred students and a hundred and sixty students at two different elementary schools means you have different numbers of sections, different class sizes, different resources for the PTO to do fundraising. Everything about the entire operation is different. And so we kind of nibble around the edges of trying to make things as consistent and equitable as possible. But until we figure out the rezoning, it's not really going to get there.
Do we know what the percent capacity to this school is? Because the sheer numbers may not matter if the buildings are different.
Yeah. So actually Mount Horvath has something like around a five hundred person functional capacity with two hundred students there right now. They're all around five, that includes preschool. I think three of them are at, are five hundred and one is like five fifty or six hundred. I can get that information though, as we do the analysis. The other thing that's going to exacerbate this and makes this, I, I asked explicitly the leadership team, can this wait for one more year so that we can focus all of our attention on return to school and the other smaller things? The reason why our recommendation is that we can't wait is that all of the new developments are in the central and woodland zones. Two of them already have people buying houses and signing contracts. Which means it's going to get worse in the middle of the school year. We staffed Woodland for next year because we know there will be more kids moving in somewhere in the December, January, February range, which means we're expending resources on an inefficiency because of where the new development is happening. And so again, at a minimum, I see this as almost three different levels or status quo. We can operate our schools inefficiently. We, we can do that and we are making it work very well. That's status quo. Then there's an option where we do a relatively basic rezoning, which has happened every eight or nine years whenever things like this happen. Where you basically move several neighborhoods or streets from one school to the next and you rebalance. And if you're not in that zone that moves, you probably think, no big deal. This is great. And if you're in that zone, you feel very strongly one way or the other about what should happen. And then the third, which is the most invasive is to look at using it as an opportunity to make other changes. For example, in a neighboring community for next year, they're changing from having multiple K-five buildings or K-four buildings like we have and going down to two early childhood centers with like pre-K through two and two upper elementary schools with three through five. Those are the kinds of analysis that would be in the larger restructuring. If this is a priority for this coming year, we at the board table would have to design the scope of what are the questions we're asking? What's the timeline so that we can make decisions by January? Because then it has to be baked into the budget process for planning for next September.
So just, just as a point of clarity, even though the schools may not be balanced as far as number of students, none of our schools are above pass.
Definitely not, right?
Yep. So it's not a matter of stuffing too many.
Yeah. So we have a huge benefit here, which is we are not forced into a decision because there aren't enough seats for students. To be honest, from a functional standpoint, Central is about as large as it can get before we make some change. Because we also have two specialized special education programs housed in that building. At a minimum, we'd have to move them out to gain more space if we've got too many more kids. And also the way our master schedules are set up, we can handle eighteen sections, which is how many they have. So if we went up to a nineteenth or a twentieth section, we'd have to make So if we went up to a 19th or a 20th section, we'd have to make some staffing changes to make better. But we're not, you know, a generation ago in this community, there were conversations because the schools were all at or above capacity and there had to be changes made. We're not in that situation. It's better to be in this one.
Do you want to have any comments on this topic or questions?
Just so I understand, like Matt on the agenda work, one of the new developments is going to Central's, Dr. Mingle. I guess it's because if you move, if you, um, you change the zoning, you have just blocks on the map of Warren, right? So the new development on Mount Harv just logically goes to Central School because everybody around that new development goes to Central School. Despite the fact that that's got the most kids and it might be better to go all the way to Mount Harv, it doesn't make sense, right? Because it's in clearly in that geographic zone.
Let me jump into that a little bit though, because that is a decision we could, that could be an outcome. We don't have to decide as a board that you go to the nearest elementary school. That is the tradition here. So we, there's a tradition of neighborhood elementary schools, but that's not, there's no law that says that. So there are communities where a new development comes on. They go to the school with the fewest kids. We actually analyzed that for these developments that are on the agenda tonight and decided it wasn't our recommendation. Because it's, it causes problems where kids are not with their neighborhood kids. It was, it will also create demographic problems down the road where you could potentially wind up with different, significantly different demographics from one school to the next. That's one of our concerns with this. Because where low income housing is going to be built will be different. And so you, we have to be really careful as we go through a rezoning process to fix that. But there are communities where they might take a development and, you know, our, our town's not, it's large, but the difference sometimes is like half a mile between one school and the next. Right now there are people who live closer to Mount Horvath than Central that go to Central. Those are the easy changes from a logistical map perspective, but they're not easy for the people who are affected by it, which is why we have to do.
So aside from, which I, I would think is the easiest, the geographic, aside from obviously the, the the impact it has on those families, but aside from the geographic rezoning, which I agree is probably best thing to do rather than have this development, let's say that school or this thing. Uh, what would be the other types of changes that you could potentially see as something on the table?
The, the restructure question is the question about early elementary and upper elementary. So this came up six or seven years ago in the community for different reasons, it did not go to really a deep discussion of that specific question. Because there were other things on the agenda at the time about closing schools, which are not on the agenda. I should say that repeatedly. We, we definitely need all the buildings we have. We are projecting based on the demo, the new developments that we will be back to where we were before enrollment decline in the next six day years. So we have to think about what is the best structure for that day, five years from now, when our schools are close to capacity. And so the, um, the area we would like to analyze is, are there opportunities where we can be giving a better educational experience at while we're also rezoning to balance the schools? Meaning maybe our resources would be better if we had people who were experts at early childhood education. You know, there's a very big difference in the pre-K to two where you're learning how to learn. And then three and above where you're using those skills to apply it to learning. We would like to analyze that. But no changes like that would happen without a huge community input process and then bringing recommendations to the board to be discussed and brought around down the road.
This is all.
Um, yeah, thank you. I just have a question about how we reflect these four goals once we arrive at them. Um, because we do include them on our agendas, so they should be, um, have sufficient explanation so that they're understandable. So this, this last one in particular, support the implementation of your two strategic plan priorities. Um, I would want to list what those priorities are. You can't look at this and read from it that we're talking about a rezoning conversation.
We can definitely figure out a way to make sure that's clear. What, once we land on what they are, how, yep. Sorry, the last thing, the last thing I need to say, uh, sort of for the record here is from a, from an administrative standpoint, we need some direction on whether or not the board wants to engage in a consideration of consolidating or regionalizing with our neighboring communities. Because if that is a priority, then that needs to be the priority and we need to put the other things on hold. It is our recommendation that a better use of our time and resources is to answer the question about what is the best model and location for elementary school students so that we're set up for the next five to 10 years of elementary school division. But it's, it, it will be very difficult to do both at the same time because they're both really involved, community engagement kind of processes.
Yeah, I, I would agree that we should probably focus on, on the district itself rather than, uh, worrying about a regionalization with, with, with three other school districts at the moment. Does anybody have, want to provide feedback on this? So I mean, I don't know if we, you know, as far as giving you direction. Hearing a lot of feedback from the other board members, but I think the discussions that we've had on this topic in committee lead us to think that the, the, the result of regionalization is probably not as big a priority for us as making sure that the restructure of the town, the, the school within the town, uh, would be the, be the higher priority. If anyone disagrees with that, now is the time to, to speak up. Otherwise, I think we'll give the administration the direction that to focus on on restructuring there or, or looking at the study of what, what will work best, whether it's a restructure, rezoning or wherever that might.
And we would take no additional stuff. Basically, when we leave tonight, our job is to come back to you with sort of the first iteration of like big buckets of actions that would take place under each of these things. So that then in August, we can have a public discussion about, are these the right actions and the right timelines? So nothing happens until that, that all takes place.
And I guess at that point, because I mean, we're kind of talking about this in the abstract. You know, at that point, we can talk a little more specifically about what our goals of outcome would be, uh, for that. Whoever that plan happens to be, and, and help you prioritize your focus after we have that discussion. So the next steps, uh, iteration of goals between now and August meeting.
Yeah. So that's just, so again, um, and this is our first time going through this in a while with everybody like being able to be in person, which is wonderful. So what I will do is for this Thursday superintendent's update, I'll get a very rough something together. And then don't be shy about sending questions and comments because what happens is we have four or five weeks between now and the next board meeting. We just keep iterating. So you're not, we're not meeting in committees, but you're giving me feedback so that I can bring you a, a great product in August for public discussion about the priorities.
Does anyone want to provide any feedback or direction of their personal opinion on this topic before Matt takes those away and starts working on it?
What topic are you asking for?
Of the, of the, um, the iteration of the goals. Is there anything you want him to focus on or depending on that you wanted to pay attention to?
Yeah, I just, sorry, I just had a question. Oh, there's all the heads that turned. Sorry, I didn't mean to, to scare anybody if I did. So I just want to make sure I understand the process. So in, in August, Dr. Mingle, you'll put together, I guess, a draft and recommendations of, of the goals. And then are we voting on that? Or is that based on the collective input you received between now and then, assuming that the August meeting has all of our input and therefore it would move forward?
Right. So there's not a legal requirement for these to be voted on. It has been our practice to vote on them because it makes it very clear that the board has taken a position that these are the priorities. So that would be my recommendation that we would have a, a rough draft discussion in August. And then at the next meeting, they would be formal, you know, they'd be.
So we wouldn't necessarily vote on them at the next meeting.
Right.
But that would be the, the opportunity for us to have a much more in-depth discussion about those particular goals. Try and clean them up, get consensus on that. And then at the following meeting.
And that allows the public to give commentary as well, just because they, they have heard about it this month, next month, before it gets official, made official.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, voice from above.
You're on surround sound in this, in the media center.
Yeah, I'm on mute. It's, it's a coughing, sniffling voice. So, uh, I'm here and not there.
Okay. Seeing nothing else on the, uh, retreat agenda, I think we can take an early break and we will reconvene at seven o'clock. So motion to suspend, I guess is what we're doing now?
Sounds like second.
Yeah, suspend. Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
So see you at seven o'clock.
You can't get.
Morning until last year. It was just starting with. Yeah, minutes approving that.
Okay, motion to resume tonight's board meeting.
Second. This is all. Thank you. Well, Warren Township Education Board members only, those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Session.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna just pick right up with the agenda. Mr. Bishi, minutes.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the June 21st, 2021 board meeting.
Second motion.
Thank you. Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brazil. Mrs. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Damaja.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Correspondence information. Yes, no HIB reports here. The board received seven emails from three individuals on return to school topics for correspondence, and that's it for that session.
Okay, so I hope everyone is having a good summer so far. The weather has been hot and rainy, but other than that, it's been fantastic. It's nice to be back in the room and see everyone's face in person again. Having members of the public back in person again is great as well. And I'm excited that tonight we can, Dr. Mingle will be presenting the return to school for the fall, which barring any major upsets over the next couple of weeks, will look a lot like normal school once again. So we're very excited about that. With that.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Couple of agenda items, but first I do want to thank Mr. Rigor, who I believe is in here, Mr. Zhao, Mrs. Tofsky, Ms. Regan, Mr. Kimick. We have a lot of extra people helping us make tonight's meeting happen for various reasons, including being able to run for the first time a live in-person meeting and a meeting that allows for Zoom public commentary and interaction. So thank you to everybody for your help and to watch on Hills Regional, who also helped with some technology support as well. I do want to remind the members of the public that the deadline to file to run for the board is next Monday, July 26th at 4:00 PM. That information's on the district website if you're interested in getting the details about how to go through that process. And on the agenda, I just wanted to call out a few items. Item B5 is the official approval to put a referendum in front of the voters in December, which we've been talking about for over a year at this point. But this is the process that makes that official. Zero tax impact, like the 2019 referendum, obviously much more information to come down the road. B10, we want to thank the Warren Middle School PTO for their support of the eighth grade graduation with their donation. B18, we are designating a set of streets in a new development for school zoning. It's important for people to recognize that we now know at least two developments will be opening during the 2021-22 school year. And so we're trying to anticipate that in our staffing levels as well. Even without those new developments, we are currently projecting our first increase in enrollment in about a decade. So that's very exciting as well. And finally, in item C5, I want to point out that we are using some of our federal COVID relief funding to provide summer counseling to students who qualify for it across all five schools.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mingle. Discussion, I'm sorry, we're going to the presentation now. Yeah, so we're still yours.
Okay, good evening. So I have to use the microphone to make sure that we get it for the recording and for the Zoom call. So we're very excited to update the community on where we are with our return to school planning. Since our last update, which was back in May, of course, our return to school vision remains the same, which is to safely return every one of our students and staff members to a traditional schedule in September, first day of school, September 1st this year. And you've seen this cycle. This is the same process we've been using for the last 18 months, where all of this has been vetted through our district return to school committees, the leadership team, the boards ad hoc committee, and in addition, everything you'll see tonight has also been vetted through our local public health official before we announced it to make sure that we have the support there as well. So these slides provide an overview of our plan for returning every student to a traditional length school day, as I said, on September 1st. And it's based on the guidance that we have as of today. So it's important that we do have the Department of Ed, Department of Health, and CDC guidelines, and we know that most of it is optional, which allows the flexibility you'll see in the presentation as opposed to required as it was last year. And as I said, it's been created in consultation with Kevin Sumner, who's the Warren Township Health official. Of course, if there are new guidelines that come out in the future, we will have to adjust to that in that event. The CDC currently recommends that local communities make decisions based on their local community transmission. I'll show you that data in a minute. And this plan presents a continuum so that if conditions worsen down the road, we would have a plan in place already that everybody knows from the first day of school. All of those plans are full days for all students, regardless of whether we are green, yellow, orange, or red. So what's on the screen right now is a State Department of Health scale. This is how the state determines whether a region is low, moderate, high, or very high risk. So we've used these references without going into the details. We're not going to dig into the stats right this second, but it's important to know that there are three things that the state looks at. Case rate, the percent of people presenting COVID-like illness, and the percent positivity. And then they average the scores of those three things and reach a weekly update on what the risk is for that region. They've been doing this all throughout. This happens even in non-COVID times with other kind with flu illness cases, that sort of thing. Published every Thursday. The link is on the just on the website here on the screen, so everybody can see it. It's all public information. So as an example, in the most recent update from Somerset County, our region is in moderate risk. I think a lot of people assume we're in low risk based on things opening up, but we are not. We are in yellow moderate risk. We were low for about two weeks and it went back to moderate. And I've circled where each of those indicators are on the most recent data, and you can see two of them are yellow, one is green. They get averaged together. It averages out to being in yellow. That's how the state goes through this process each Thursday. You see in this chart in all my weekly briefings, this is just the case rate. It's only one of those three indicators. And you'll see that we've been pretty consistent at one to two case, as far as the case rate there per hundred thousand. You'll see that it's, the colors beneath it though, show that we had that little window right at the end of the school year where it was green, but pretty much the entire school year last year was in yellow or orange. And then finally, the most up-to-date Warren Township cases. So the district case information is not updated during the summer because we don't have our students in school. But it is important to note that the Warren Township Health official is reporting an uptick in cases locally. There have been more cases so far in July than in May and June combined in Warren Township. And so that's important for us to keep an eye on because the guidelines and what we can do down the road depends on the local case rate staying low. And so this is important for us to track as we go forward. So what we're presenting tonight is a color-based continuum for next school year so that again, everybody knows what the conditions are and how we respond to changing health conditions. That under green or yellow, full days of in-person learning for all students, operating as close to the pre-pandemic normal as we possibly can. And I'll go through all the details of that in a minute. If we go to high risk or very high risk, orange or red, there would still be full days of in-person learning for all students, but we would start layering on additional recommendations from the Department of Ed, Department of Health, and CDC as mitigation measures. But school would still be open for a full six-hour and 40-minute day for students. It would just be the matter of mitigation that we can do. And then if it's, if it's in the highest levels, we'll take the guidance from our health official. But it's important to know that the state guidelines no longer say that schools close when cases are high. That is a significant and important change from last year. So a couple of different categories, governance. So our proposal is that as it has been for the last three weeks of summer fund and ESY, masks will be optional, but recommended for unvaccinated individuals in facilities, and that would be in low and moderate risk. However, if the community went to high risk, that's when masks would go back to being a mandate. That we are very happy, and it's extremely beneficial to our summer programs, that there is no longer a required travel. That we are very happy and it's extremely beneficial to our summer programs that there is no longer a required travel quarantine advisory, which means families don't have to think about what happens if I go to a state that's in an area and then I come back and then my student can't come to school. That is no longer in place. And we have been extremely successful at summer fund with these guidelines in place. We're seeing about 30% or so of students wearing masks with the optional mask wearing, 70% not. That means we have had no health and safety concerns. And in fact, we've generated more students coming to the program, which has been really great. On the wellness side, in low risk, we'll still have hand washing, as you would expect at the obvious times, with additional hand washing available if it gets to a higher level. A really important change here is that our proposal takes away the daily health screening form. That in fact, where our plan would be to do that starting in August, as long as it's green or yellow. And that would only come back if we were in high risk or very high risk. This is based on the guidance and recommendations we receive from our health professionals. And then the exclusion is exactly the same as it was last year from the state. If you are unvaccinated, which of course is nearly all of our students, especially at the elementary schools, if you're, if it's in green or yellow, there is an exclusion of 10 days, or it could be seven days if you're tested in the middle of that timeframe. If it's high risk, the exclusion goes to two full weeks. That has not changed in the state guidelines. On the facility side, we have a really specific and robust cleaning program in general and a system that goes up whenever there's regular illness, never mind COVID. We would just follow that. One of the, another big change that maybe people outside of the schools weren't really that aware of, but last year, there were a lot of guidelines about reducing sharing of materials. As long as we're in green or yellow, that would go away, which will make it much easier to run certain phys ed programs, for example, art classes and so on. Buses would remain with, even though they're not, most, most of the buses are a vendor, but we have a good partnership with our vendor to make sure we're cleaning our buses. And then our HVAC systems, the optimal place for us to run them are to 5% to 10% fresh air. We can, we've been at 20% since we reopened last September. The guidelines are that as long as it's in lower moderate risk, we can go back, which will be much better for quality of life. Because when you bring in a lot of fresh air and it's hot outside, the system has to work overtime to cool the air. It gets more humid in the classrooms and so on. So and windows can of course be open. And then on the instruction side, essentially it's pre-pandemic. So are the regular special schedule, elective schedule, the middle school will have mixed cohorts when they change classes, all the traditional approaches to the way the schedules work. Our teachers will make their own decisions about how they set up their classroom, which like it would have been pre-pandemic. And importantly, there is no option from the state of New Jersey for remote learning as an option for full distance. We will need to use instruction remotely. If there's a student who must quarantine, it will not look the same as it did last year. It'll be a different kind of a situation. But if a student is required to quarantine, not if their family's on vacation, they just want to be on distance learning for a day or two. If a student is required to quarantine, we are required to accommodate that as best we can, following our home instruction policy, which is a little bit different than when we had everybody available on, on distance learning. So that's the big summary. But I did also want to run through and show exactly what changed from two months ago to now, so that it's very clear. This will also, this entire presentation will go in this Thursday's community email for people to go back through. So what you'll see is what we did pre-pandemic, what we did during the past year, what we announced on May 24th, which is now essentially our backup plan if things get worse. And then what we're announcing tonight, assuming things are in green or yellow when we reopen. So in facility learning time is no change from May. Most of these slides are going to say no change from May. No change from what we said in May. The academic experience at the elementary schools, no change from May, the full suite of specials. Intervention and enrichment at the elementary schools, no change from May. All of our programs are in place. Academic experience at the middle school, no change from May, the full schedule with cycles. Intervention and enrichment at the middle school, also no changes from May here. Staffing assignments, no changes. We're in very good shape as far as our staffing. Average class sizes, we are seeing some creep up in some kindergartens, but our average class sizes right now are still projected to be 16 at the elementary schools and 18 at the middle school. Which is great. Transportation, no changes from May. We are encouraging families to use the busing this year. It's much easier for us to manage arrival and dismissal if most kids are coming to school on the buses. We will ask people in their registration form next month, if they're definitely not going to send their child on the bus to give us a heads up. I do want to point out, in case you didn't see it on one of the previous slides, currently masks are required on buses. That's a CDC and actually signed by the president. So unless that changes, mask will be worn on buses, even if they're not required in school facilities. No changes to our arrival and dismissal procedures, so we will have curbside parent drop off and pickup like we did this year, but again, we need more, most people to be on the buses. And then infection control, I've gone through this on the other slides, no daily health screening form, assuming, assuming we're in green or yellow, which we think will be a significant ease of pressure and stress. And then we will follow the exclusion protocol for close contacts. And we have somewhere around 50% of our middle school students are vaccinated. And that, there is an effect there. If you are vaccinated in a close contact, you are not required to quarantine. So that is very beneficial for the middle school. We will adjust our cleaning based on the risk level. Masking optional, but recommended for unvaccinated individuals, as we've said. The distancing requirement has changed in a subtle but important way, which is instead of there being a minimum of three feet, there is a recommendation to maintain three feet to the greatest extent possible or practical. And so that means there, most of our classrooms will be that way, but as we're moving through hallways or in cafeterias, there may be some closer places. No change to our after-school activities and athletics. Everything will be running. No change to visitors, volunteers, and facility usage. We already have started allowing outside facility usage going on now. Including evening events and outside groups. Students will eat lunch in the cafeterias. Under the updated guidelines, we have much more easily able to accommodate lunches in the cafeterias. As we talked about at some previous meetings, the board did approve the national school lunch program. So for this year, there is a national school lunch program, which means that all students who want it can have a lunch at no cost to their family. That meets the federal school lunch requirements. Obviously, people can bring their own lunch as well. No change to our communication schedule from May. And then that leaves us to what comes next. So we would encourage people, if they have questions about the plan or, you know, scenarios, if this happens, then what? That you email those to covid19@warrentboue.org. Any questions received before this Thursday will be built into a new FAQ that will launch this Thursday. And of course, that doesn't mean you can't reach out to us after that. We'll add them to the FAQ as time goes on. So please send your questions to covid19@warrentboue.org. We will, if there's anything new to address on August 23rd here, we're all hoping that there's not, that this is, that we don't see any new restrictions be put in place on, on us. That we can update it on the 23rd if we need to. And that we would have a parent information session later that week. We're waiting until after the next board meeting, just in case there are any changes. We want to make sure we're giving full, complete, accurate information. And that'll be about one week before the first day of school for students. I'm going to move back to my seat.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. I think we can all. I think I speak for most everyone when I say we're excited to have a kind of return to normalcy in the schools. It sounds like the only restriction that we've got right now is masks on the bus. It's the only thing that would be different from, from a full return to normal. So thank you for the presentation. Anybody have any questions or things they would like to discuss regarding the presentation? Okay, seeing none, moving to the committee reports.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Happy summer. Um, so I'm going to read directly from the minutes because unfortunately, as people could see on the minutes, I was absent for the meeting last Wednesday, July 14th, because my nephew turned six. And I was in charge of pinata, so I had to go. Um, that being said, so the agenda items were the Warren Middle School Character Education Research. It was, the presentation was made by Dr. Derek Ressa. Um, and he presented his dissertation to us, which we had actually asked Dr. Mingle. We were very interested to see his research and findings. Then the committee discussed his research project. The student participation in it, some of the eighth grade students, the character ed program overall, how the administration will use the data for obvious continual improvement. And then how it can be applied in the middle school, excuse me, in the elementary schools. Um. Oh, and that there were some topics in there, and it typically was that some additional professional development might be necessary for teachers who may not have training or comfort with certain topics that have come up. And then we talked about the student, the sample student achievement and reporting dashboard. And that was, I'll talk about the resource first. So the resource, the title of the resource, which Admin provided for us, it was very, I guess enlightening. I don't want to use interesting because that's a boring adjective. But the titles, I'll just read you the title of the article. It was students' test scores tell us more about the community they live in than what they know. So we know that standardized assessment data isn't the end-all and be-all to, to maybe judge our district or our staff or our students, that we have to look at overall performance and then each student's individual growth. And then the sample dashboard is very user-friendly. It had good graphics and visually appearing, appealing. So the thought right now from Admin is that you begin, we start, we set up kind of the dashboard with just basic student achievement, such as the I-ready performance in ELA and math. And then some growth in ELA and math with the addition of when the state, you know, publishes assessment results, that then those can be posted on our Warren Township Schools sample dashboard. Um, yeah, a lot of discussion on the dashboard. We were excited about that. And then the next step was once our goals were established for September for the board 21-22, that we're trying to figure out when to make the dashboard public. So we're still, that's still in the works. It was the first time any of us, I should say, it was the first time any board member has seen the, I guess, a demo or prototype of what the dashboard, dashboard would look like. Um, and then we're meeting again in August. I think we have it set for the 16th. Maybe I'm wrong. Yeah, um, August 16th at 4:00 PM. We will have our next meeting where we'll be looking at some, provide some curriculum and get some feedback on what's been done. And that's it. That's what I missed. My nephew was happy, so.
Thank you, Mrs. DiMaggio. Any other committee reports? I think we have the back-to-school committee, but I think we've covered that.
Yeah.
Moving on to public commentary. Very nice to have public commentary in public, which is great. You'll have three minutes. Please state your name and address. I would attempt to give you a 20-second notice. We will start with people in the room first and then go to Zoom. Please use the raise your hand feature. And when it is your time, please, you know, unmute yourself and turn on your camera. That would be appreciated.
And Mr. Franco, if anybody in the room is going to do public commentary, they'll need to go to the podium so we can get the microphone to capture that.
Okay, very good. Any public commentary from in the room? Okay, thank you. Can you hear me fine? Actually, it's not a problem. Mr. Croson.
Hi, how are you? Daniel Croson, 42 Fairfield Avenue. Um, first, I just wanted to thank Dr. Mingle and the board for their work on the return to school plan. I know the last year and a half has not been easy for anybody, and I just want to give you the credit that's due for navigating a really difficult time, trying to put students' interests at the forefront of every decision. So thank you for that. Um, just one question, Dr. Mingle, I know at the last meeting you had mentioned that you'd be meeting with members of the PTO in terms of options for fundraising opportunities now that food days won't be here next school year. And I was just wondering if that meeting had taken place and if there are any updates on that.
Thank you. We'll, we'll come back to answers when we're done with public commentary. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to? Do we have any hands raised in Zoom?
Hi, this is Jennifer Armayo, 24 Briarwood Drive East.
Is she the first one? I can't read the screen, so you'll have to tell me. Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Armayo.
Hi, I just had a question based on Dr. Mingle's presentation that he just did. With the school opting to use the free lunch program for lunches this year, I'm curious to know who will be handing out and serving the lunches during lunch this year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other hands raised in Zoom?
I don't see any others. I'm on the Zoom and Mrs. Armayo was the only one as I'm scrolling through the list.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weinstein.
Yep.
So two questions.
Sure, they should go together. So I have a meeting with the PTO presidents on Wednesday, I think is the right date. Tell me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Singleton. Yes, I think it's Wednesday afternoon. And actually, both of the, so the topics about fundraising and about lunch service and all that are all on that agenda. So more to come.
Okay. Items for board consideration. Does any, does any board member wish to pull a item for separate vote or discussion?
Yes, I would like to pull item A1 and recuse myself.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just had a question on B, B13.
Okay. Why don't you ask your question?
So the B13, it was just a matter of the excess funds that we've received that are, you know, unbudgeted, unforeseen funds from Trenton, from Murphy for special education. When we allocate them to the three line items on the agenda noted, that's just like a placeholder, right? That doesn't necessarily have to be spent in those three line items. It could be that we reallocate that in future meetings to different spending.
Yeah, so that, that's accurate most, for the most part, meaning that the board can always transfer funds down the road. The two of the accounts that we moved that money to, so just for the benefit of the public, we received significantly more extraordinary aid in the final state budget than anybody expected. And as a result, the board has to reallocate those new revenues. And so the tuition revenue and the grades one through five salary revenue expenses, money is being put there because those are trending to be over budget. So the reason for elementary school salaries is we had to add sections at Woodland School based on the development that is opening in December. That was unbudgeted, and we are on the verge of having to add at least one more section potentially. And so that's why there's money is put into those accounts. If we don't need it for that purpose, we'll transfer it elsewhere. Health benefits, you know, the people on the finance committee are very well aware. We only know the health benefit increase for the first half of a, of our fiscal year. And so that's always our placeholder in case there is an over-budgeted health benefits. If we don't need it there, which would be great, then we have other options.
Do you wish to pull that for separate vote?
Uh, no, no.
Uh, anybody else? I know we have discussed ad nauseam, but I know you mentioned it, but item B5, just to get that's to improve the referendum, to do all the capital improvement work. So this is a reminder. Mr. Bishi, if you would.
All right, motion to approve agenda items A2 through A4, B1 through B19, C1 through C17, and D1 and D2.
One second.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brazil. Mrs. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
This is Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Motion to approve agenda item A1.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brazil. Mrs. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Okay, any unfinished business anyone would like to discuss? Seeing none, any new business anyone would like to discuss? Public commentary, there's a second public commentary for any topic whatsoever. Same rules apply. Please use the podium. You'll have three minutes. I will attempt to give you a twenty second warning when your time is up. Mrs. Silver.
I have a silver thirty-five quail run. While the most urgent matter facing our schools right now is whether we can be assured. Normal full-length school days inclusive of all specials, activities, lunch and enrichment programs, all in person and unmasked, other topics still seem to be seeping in. Since we're a standstill of sorts with with any changes, thought it was time another issue was addressed. I've researched, yet I can't find an answer that satisfies me, but I found scads of people feeling just as curious. Why are we still allowing the N J E A conference to take over a chunk of our already lightfall and early winter school schedules? What happened to our February, the month everyone else around the country enjoys much needed time off? The New Jersey State Handbook for Parents, beginning in the public school system, indicates there is no mention of this directive. As there is little change to the calendar year to year, I'll use our upcoming as an example. From September first through December thirty first, our schools have fifteen days off. At a time when momentum should be building to create the solid foundation for a year of learning. From January first through June twentieth, there are only ten days off, in total, two of those being half days. Just from January to spring break, which comes in mid-April this year, there are only two days off. During a time when we accrue our most snow days, we only have two scheduled days off. I might be able to get behind this if it was required for every teacher to attend some or all of this, as is the case in most professions. When the availability of a professional development in the form of a vacation comes up. But there is no requirement. Most teachers don't even attend. Then to proceed this with three half days for conferences that used to take place in the evening. There are forty-six other states that do this during the summer. Why is New Jersey always exempt from the majority of rules that actually expand the education for students rather than stifle them? A quote from the New Jersey Education Report in two thousand and nineteen, quote, "Your annual surplus of quality time is courteous. Is courtesy of the New Jersey State Legislature. Almost a century ago in nineteen twenty-three, our representatives voted to inscribe in statute eighteen A thirty-one dash two. A two-day holiday for N J E A members. Hey, moms, we're home anyway, right? Any full-time teaching staff member of any board of education, of any local school district or regional school district. Or of a county vocational school or any secretary or office clerk can attend the annual convention of the N J E A. And receive his whole salary for the days of actual attendance upon the sessions of such convention. We all know it's not nineteen twenty-three anymore. It's almost a hundred years later. I think it's time we stop being beholden to teacher union demands and put our focus back on the students where it should always be. I continue to quote, "Look, I get the importance of professional development, networking and camaraderie. But even the New York State Union of Teachers eschews an annual convention that disrupts the instruction." Why? Because the A F T says that professional professional development should be embedded and site-specific. In other words, the best professional enrichment for teachers occurs in school. Can we rethink this obsolete, all teachers go to Atlantic City during school days thing, especially when they don't all go? New Jersey mandates an annual school calendar of at least a hundred and eighty days. What if it were a hundred and eighty-two? Let's imagine this, N J E A voluntarily voluntarily foregoes its autumnal convention. And yes, it's written in a statute, but legislators would happily repeal it with the union's blessings. The month of November regains momentum, students reap the bounty of fewer calendar disruptions. School districts compensate teachers and other staff members for additional work. Win-win, right? Even in Atlantic City, can't beat those odds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Silver. Is there anybody on Zoom wishing to make a comment? Mr. Weinstein, if you could help us out there.
Yep, I am checking now. There is nobody with their hand raised.
Okay.
On Zoom.
Nobody else in the room? If you want more time, Mrs. Silver. Okay, let's see, in a public commentary. And brings us to the end of our first in-person meeting. So motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second was Mrs. Zahn. Hi, all Warren Township Board of Education members only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.